The Revere School Committee meeting. It's December 20th, 2022. Will you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Feranti.
Here.
Mrs. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. Kingston.
Here.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis.
Present.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
First item on the agenda.
Mrs. Rizzo, can I have a personal privilege, please?
Yes, Mr. Feranti.
Thank you. Last week, one of my dear friends, Robert "Barbie" Katnazzo Sr., passed away unexpectedly. He was 79 years old and was a lifelong resident in the city of Revere. He survived by his wife Christina. She worked for us in the cafeteria. His three children, Barbie Katnazzo Jr., who works in our IT department, his daughter Diane and his son Thomas. He had two brothers, Nick, who works for the city of Revere, and his brother Ronnie, who worked for us as a custodian. He's also a grandfather. He has several nieces and nephews. It was very tough for the family, the services were this week. And alls I can give them is my condolences, and anything we can do to help them, we should. Unless somebody else wants to comment on, I don't think we should have a moment of silence for them.
If we could all stand for a moment of silence, please? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, appreciate it.
On a high note, we have recognitions for a team that we are so proud of, no matter what. We've always been proud of you, and we're so happy for your successes. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mrs. Bronson Rizzo. And just very briefly, Coach Leanne Mimo won't be able to join us tonight as she has a game tonight. But we're glad that some of our students are here and others who are associated with the volleyball team. They really did have an outstanding year, undefeated, 20-0, unreal, right? And Greater Boston League Champions as a result of that. So we're just really proud of them. Incredible work. And I'll say one thing that I know, having been a former athlete back in my early high school days, is you don't get this kind of success without the whole team working together. So congratulations to all of you for working so hard and really being able to shine and support each other. You're definitely a model for all of the other teams in the school, and hopefully we're celebrating other teams after the winter season or after the spring season. But congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go up to the podium, and I have certificates that I'll read the name, and then you can come up and get it. Thanks.
At the end of that, if you ladies would kindly stay here for a minute for a picture so that we can put your gorgeous faces in the journal. Yes, I'll ask our members to come out front so they can shake your hand. If you're afraid of COVID or anything, don't feel like you're insulting anyone. Do whatever makes you comfortable.
The first award is for Gabriela De La Rosa. I know that a number of the students couldn't make it because they have other obligations, so that's okay. Leah Doucette.
Not here.
Not here, all right. We'll still applaud them all, right? Camilla Echavarri? How about Stephanie Espinoza? Kalen Fernandez? Juanita Geraldo? Captain Sabrina Endurado? Captain Fiona Musara? Kiara Rodriguez? Captain Yara Vranik? Liv Young? Assistant Coach Carrie Flaherty? Assistant Coach Emily Hostetter? Assistant Coach Allison Pluto? Coach Leanne O'Hara Mimo? Not able to make it. And to the team in general, I guess. All right, congratulations.
Stacy, you want to take a picture?
Ladies, no, ladies, five minutes.
Stacy, I want to take a five-minute recess. Now, do we do a picture? Stacy, recess first? Yeah.
Do a picture first, then do a recess.
One, two, three. Thank you.
And if you eat candy, it smells bad.
Well, that was a nice way to end a year. So the next item is the consent calendar. We have decided to take two items off the consent calendar.
Four.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. For two grants and two...
Adjustments to...
Adjustments to petty cash. So can we have a motion to take them off?
I make the motion.
Second.
And do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar without them?
I make the motion.
So on both cases, I had Mr. Feranti with the motion and Ms. Ty with the second, is that right?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Okay, the first two that we took off of the consent calendar were for petty cash. The first one is, please request that the school committee authorize an increase to the ceiling of the City Lab High School petty cash account from 300 to 500. And the second one was, please request that the school committee authorize the establishment of a petty cash account to be managed by the Fine Arts Department with a ceiling of $300. So moved.
Second.
The other two items that we took off were grants that we're very excited about. The first one is from the Commonwealth, both are from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Congratulations. We are pleased to notify you that Revere Public Schools has been awarded a Mass Grad Promising Practices Grant in the amount of $115,000. $70,000 for Revere High School and $45,000 for City Lab Steam Innovation School. We want to thank you for your commitment to providing dropout prevention and re-engagement activities to ensure more students graduate from high school prepared for the challenges of post-secondary education and careers. That was exciting news. Yes, Dr. Kelly?
So just to explain a little bit about the intention for this grant, it is a Mass Grad Promises Promising Practices Grant, and so Mr. Bowen and Dr. Mulligan had to submit this grant jointly. And for the high school part, the $70,000, they're going to focus on dropout prevention for 150 of our EL students who are particularly struggling. And ways they're going to work with them are to hire somebody who's going to coordinate an EL dropout prevention program, and also stipend teachers to act as coaches for these individual students, who will call them, be in constant contact with their families. And then the third piece that they hope to spend some of that money on is for academic interventions like tutoring and credit recovery, again, specifically targeted toward a particular, roughly 150 students who are all English language learners and who are struggling to stay current in their academic progress. And then for the City Lab, they have $45,000. Dr. Mulligan is using that primarily to provide professional development for teachers on project-based instruction. And also, some of that $40,000 will go toward the design studios that the students have been engaging in, in Boston and other areas around the Revere community.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. The second grant that was awarded, again, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, congratulations. We are pleased to notify you that Revere Public Schools has been awarded an FY23 Teacher Diversification Pilot Program Grant of $15,846. We want to thank you for your commitment towards continuing to improve the educational experiences for students through this funding and your continued support. We hope to expand access to great educational opportunities in the Commonwealth. And Dr. Kelly, if you'll explain that one also, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Gravellisi. So this grant, obviously, it's a fairly nominal amount, $15,800. And you might recall that Dr. Garcia oversaw this grant for the last couple of years where we had significantly more money. This year, because it's a smaller amount, he intends to focus on the Revere High School students who have identified themselves as wanting to be teachers in the future. So they might be part of the Future Teacher Club, or they have been part of that program that he started last year, where we worked to identify students who wanted to become teachers and help them engage in dual enrollment classes and help work their way through so that ultimately, when they do get licensed to teach, they'll come back and teach our students. So one of the pieces that he's looking at is a program out of Lynn Public Schools in partnership with Salem State and in partnership with the AmeriCorps program, where students are engaged through Lynn Public Schools, he's a Future Teacher student, with AmeriCorps and have an internship through them where they teach in public schools. And so the vision, we still have some i's to dot and t's to cross, but the vision is that this $15,000 would be used to help our Revere High School students engage in that program, perhaps through transportation up to Lynn and hiring somebody to help oversee that transportation, oversee the kids as they travel. And hopefully, we can engage them in the Lynn AmeriCorps program, which is a paid internship. And so then our own students would go up there to do their work with AmeriCorps, but would actually do the internship in our elementary schools. And that way, we can help our students get some money in their pocket and also help with our elementary classrooms and help generate that pipeline of teachers that come from their Revere roots. I mean, we have a number of Revere graduates who work for us, but we certainly want to increase that number as we can.
Do we have a motion to accept?
I make the motion to accept both grants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we did not do a vote on the establishment of the fine arts and the increase for City Lab. All in favor?
Aye.
We're at the portion of public speak. Oh, sorry, Elne. So right now, we'll do the student rep report, and we are so happy to have two of the best. So our students this year are Rehan Ahmed and Elne de Jesus, and they are from our Student Advisory Committee at Revere High School, and we're so glad to have them. And there are three other students that are part of this group, too.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rehan, and I'm one of the student representatives. And without further ado, I'd like to get us right into our part of the presentation. First of all, we'd like to acknowledge the mock trial team. They went on their first field shift to the John Joseph Mocley Federal Courthouse on December 9th, and the team has their first trial on January 17th, and we wish them a best of luck. Now, moving to the speech and debate team, again, I would like to give them a massive congratulations for their impressive results at the Natick High School Tournament, which was a Saturday. The Natick Holly Fest is one of the largest tournaments of the year with over 500 students and over 30 schools competing. Special shout-outs go to Taylor Leonard, who took first place in Original Literature and was a top novice in Extemp Literature. Also goes to Mars Mercado, who placed first for the third time this season in novice oral interpretation. Erta Smehely earned second in group discussion. Endurance Nikke finished fourth in poetry reading. Suzie Nicholas was awarded third in drama audition and fifth in declamation. I have worked with these students, and this is a fantastic team. They're absolutely brilliant, and I absolutely love working with them. They are a great asset to Revere High School. Moving on to the Feminist Empowerment Movement Club, they continue to paint murals around the school. Their most recent mural of Julia de Borges is completed, and they plan on painting more historical figures, such as Coretta Scott King, Marsha P. Johnson, and Malala Yousafzai and others. FEM also invites other students for an open discussion to collaboratively exchange ideas to educate on women's history. And in addition, their Respect Her merch will be coming in soon. Going to the Outdoors Club, again, the Outdoors Club has done local hikes at the Middlesex Fells, Blue Hills Reservation, and other places. They have done mountain hikes at Mount Mundagnok, Mount Greylock, and Mount Cardigan, and their senior camping trip was at the Cardigan Campground. For this year's activities and trips, they will be going to the Mount Tom Metro Rock Climbing Center and Bray Cricket Reservation. And students can learn about hikes through the club's Google Classroom page and also through the daily announcements. Moving on, the Student Voice Committee of the Revere Equity Advisory Board is working with Revere TV to create a TV show to amplify student voices. This has created a form of allyship among students and gives underclassmen a platform to express their opinions. During the previous year, students of varying grades were invited to Revere TV Studios and given opportunities to talk in a podcast-like style. And the Student Advisory Board is currently in contact discussing opportunities to feature us in one of their shows. And moving on, the National Honor Society is sponsoring a clothing drive where students can get two hours of, an hour of community service for every two pieces of clothing that they donate. And they also plan on writing cards for hospitalized students and planning future bake sales. And then just last week's synopsis, we all know about last week's incident. And so Mr. Bowen encouraged students to meet him in the Learning Commons, where he held town halls with students to discuss what was going on. Some of the things that talked about was the appropriate actions that would take place right after the incident. Students also talked about their concerns about not feeling safe in the building. We also addressed concerns about students not being notified through emails or through other sources. And Mr. Bowen also responded to us, saying that it was a technical error and that he was working on getting a solution to it. And since then, we have gotten our weekly announcements through email on Sundays, as Mr. Bowen has been trying to do for the last few months, but was not able to. But currently, we get all of these notifications. And I will hand it over to Elne.
Thank you. Okay. So for our advisory board, from the previous school committee meeting, we heard from the principals from Hill, Garfield, and Lincoln Elementary mentioning their determinations and steps to build equitable practices and have a library that properly reflects their students. So as being a member of the advisory board, bringing this to my group, we wanted to think about ways in which we could assist them. We have a book made by Revere Youth titled Voices of Revere. And since we already have students who intern at these elementary schools, we wanted to introduce the opportunities for ELL students to read the stories that they've written personally. The reason for this is because we wanted it to serve as a window or a mirror of varying human experiences and emotions. We wanted it to offer a powerful opportunity to build community, increase student empathy towards different religions and cultures, and also push back against prejudice and bias. In the next slide, you will see on the upper right corner, the book titled Voices of Revere with some illustrations made by the students. Here are some examples as well. I'll read one out loud so you guys can get some context. I am the red flag and two-headed eagle from the country of the Fragers and the... I'm not from that place, so I don't know how to pronounce it, but I'll do my best. And Brakers from the country of the cursed mountains. I am Albanian with dreams with hope in a sunny windy landscape. I'm immigrated to the country of the opportunities. I am an Albanian who left my family for a better life in the country of Uncle Sam. I am descended from the Nyrens, the strongest warriors who created my country over a thousand years ago. Their memories live in my heart. I am Albanian who is going to college, the pride of my mom. So that's an example of some of the poems that students have written there, and there's multiple pages of different cultures, ethnicities, religion. Sometimes they might talk about family members, siblings, friends, anybody who they feel closely related to. On the next slide, we have our objective, which is students will be able to write their own stories and draw pictures to go along with it and make their own classroom book. So instead of just having our own Voices of Revere, which Revere High students have made, personally, those students can have their own little mini version of those books. Hopefully, they can share their stories with their own classmates. Introduce this, we wanted to introduce this to Revere's amplification. We want a copy of Voices of Revere in every classroom and hopefully every library once we get copies of them, and hopefully make this a yearly tradition from grades one through five. On the next slide, there is some general information, General Law Part 1, Title 6, Chapter 71a, Section 6a. So this month, I mainly, me and Rehan have mainly been focusing just on the rights of EL parents and things that they should be provided of. While doing some research, I found out that at least 5% of the schools, if the school student population is at least 5% or higher, then there should be an establishment of an English learner parent advisory council. So our school is comprised of about 2,108, from last time that I checked, 445 who are English learners, which makes 21.1% of the student population, English learners, well above 5%. The council shall be composed of volunteer parents or legal guardians of students who have been identified as English learners. The members shall represent the native language most commonly spoken by the students of the district. And down below are some duties that shall include but are not limited to the rest. In our next slide, we have the abbreviation ELAC. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that right, but it stands for English Learner Advisory Council. I spoke with Ms. Labalida here, hello, good afternoon, Director of English Learning and World Language Programs, who informed me that we have ELAC or an English Learner Advisory Council for the entire district, but not high school-based. However, we did agree, in consideration to our school size, that it would be beneficial to have our own English Learner Advisory Council in our school. Ms. Labalida also continued by giving me a brief synopsis on its purpose, which highlighted here is to provide English learner parents opportunities to learn more about the programs offered to their children and participate in school need assessments of students, parents, and teachers. The reason that I am doing this research and went to Ms. Labalida is because personally there have been ELL parents who have reached out to me and communicated their desire to advocate and personally get involved. So I wanted to find out a way. When I did my research and found out the English Learner Advisory Council existed, I was interested in building one with parents who have contacted me and showed interest in this role for our school. In the next slide, Section 12, duty to inform parents or legal guardians of English learners of their rights. So as you know, I was doing research on the advisory council, and from there, I kind of just went to a spiral, and I wanted to know more. So school districts shall at least generally inform the parents or legal guardians of English learners of their rights, and there are the highlighted pieces of what they'd be to inform. I was curious to know if our school followed the procedure. I asked Ms. Labalida, thank you. And on the next page, you will actually see the annual letter that explains to EL parents how they can opt out of programs, receive the same opportunities as the rest of our students, and can attend meetings to learn more about the programs and all the like. On our next slide, information for limited English proficient parents and guardians and for school and school districts that communicate with them. Here are some questions that parents, students have, and these are the answers. So must a school provide language assistance if I request, even if my child is proficient in English? And I am somewhat proficient in English? The answer was yes. School must respond to a parent's request for language assistance. And remember that parents can be limited English proficient, even if their child is proficient in English. So my main reason for looking up these questions and attaining the answers is because even though there are parents that are aware of this information, equally, there are parents who are also uninformed. The most important one, which is down below, highlighted in green, is it is not sufficient for the staff merely to be bilingual. For example, a staff member who is bilingual may be able to communicate directly with limited English proficient parents in a different language, but may not be competent to interpret in and out of that language or to translate documents. So I was thinking IEJROTC students or any students under the guise of community service are not eligible to translate for parents. On the next slide.
Elne, I want to actually just present an alternative interpretation of this, if I can.
Go ahead.
So as I think that you know, that we often have JROTC students who volunteer at parent conference night in our different schools. And one of the things that we've moved away from that used to be a practice is actually having a student translate to the parent from the teacher. So we have trained translators. It was one of the pieces that Dr. Garcia worked on. We've had, I think it's 16 people now, who have become licensed interpreters through a program at UMass Amherst that he was able to engage them in. And so they actually do our translations, our written translations, and serve as interpreters when we need an interpreter. We also have the translation service, which is licensed interpreters in Lyonsbridge, and that's the piece that... And that's the piece that we make available to all educators when they need to contact a family who might not speak English as their primary language. And when we have special education meetings, we often work with an outside translation agency that both translates the IEP and attends any evaluation meetings. And I do think that that is necessary, that we have licensed, trained administrators. I read that here in this piece of legislation. But I just want to be clear that that doesn't mean that we can't have somebody who speaks Spanish interact with a parent at the door who's trying to figure out how to get to the second floor or a particular classroom or in contexts like that. And so, I just wanted to clarify the difference between those two things.
Thank you. If we may resume the slides, thank you. Onto the next one, please. So, knowing this is actually very valuable. And obviously, I will need to do more research, get in contact with the 16 people, and get to know a little bit more about the servants called Lyonsbridge? Yeah, that one? Okay. So, that will be on my agenda. Thank you for notifying me. So, as the slide says, last month, one of our potential areas of investigation included translation services, which by last month, I mean the advisory board. This was due to the Improvement Council meeting last month, where I raised my concerns on score alignment on student translators at times rather than professional personnel and services. Well, Sheila, a parent who attended our meeting, mentioned that her own family would be more likely to engage with the school if they knew we had translators available and beyond student translation. But now that I have acquired this information, I'm glad to spread this on to ELL parents who have contacted me personally. My reason to create a forum is to gain insight on preference towards having student translators versus professionals. During the Improvement Council meeting, I believe that it was necessary to have formal translators at all times to set a good impression of what our school can provide for parents. A big reason why I believe many parents aren't very cooperative in advocating for themselves is because they feel like we don't have the proper resources to accommodate for them in terms of language when they come to the school and see students translating. The forum was made by our member Nicole Silva, who it has been peer-reviewed and drafted to get optimal responses and will be releasing the forum before vacation. When I communicated with parents, staff, and teachers, the general consensus that was reached is that there is a preference for professional translators because there might be a personal, private information communicated. Confidentiality is of importance. In addition to the complexity of words, it's important for the translator to properly act as a vehicle and deliver the message. With student translators, it was just more likely for them to act as a barrier between the teacher and a parent rather than a channel. So, that was one of the biggest concerns. But I'll continue to conduct some more research with the new information I've been given. And that is the end of the slide. Thank you.
Oh, how I love how you do your homework. You're amazing. We have a lot to learn from you both. Anyone have any questions for our student advisory reps? Ms. Milbury Ellis?
I have one question. During the, you had mentioned that there was a meeting, a question and answer. What was the consensus about the students? You had mentioned that they indicated not feeling safe. Did they give any suggestions as to things that we could do differently that would make them feel safe?
The general agreement between the students when communicating with Mr. Bowen is that it is important that parents be contacted, but it should also be priority for students to be contacted and also know through email, through announcement, maybe the Weekly Voice, whether that's going on YouTube Live and communicating directly to the students. Students just want to be a priority and also feel like a priority when something is going amiss in the school. Usually, you find out through staff or teacher who are talking about whatever is going on. And it just feels like there's a broken relationship between admin and students. So, that is the reason that I believe most of them feel unsafe because they feel like they aren't aware of the situations that they are part of.
Thank you.
The book reveal, I absolutely love. I remember a few years back, Garfield Middle School was, had a culture night. And there was a lot of stories that students shared. And to me, it was one of the most wonderful events that I've attended. And so, to see it come this far and to do the book, especially with grades one through five, I'm just, I'm looking forward to it.
It was very beautiful seeing the students write, add pictures, make the cover of the book themselves. It just shows how dedicated they were through this. And it was just not one class. It was multiple classes, many periods. Very diverse group of kids and the dedication and the enjoyment that they had doing this inspired me to introduce this to the younger students so they can have someone to relate to, a way to find out their own identity and what they love, and hopefully, help them do the same thing.
And one last thing, I had a friend, I don't think she's my friend anymore, but she had called to tell me that one of our students beat her daughter in the poetry reading. And she was really upset. And I said, "Well, that's too bad." That's, our kids are better than your kids. What can I say? But yeah, it was something to be very proud of. So, thank you for all the work that you did tonight. We look forward to seeing what you have for us, always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give him a seat.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Public Speak. Dr. Kelly, if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to participate, please raise your hand and let me know if anyone raised their hand.
No hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? No? We'll move on to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the committee knows, last month, we had our principals who came in and talked about their school improvement plans. And we've always talked about how the school improvement plans are a derivative of the District Improvement Plan. And you've all seen the goals and approved them over the summer that form the basis for the District Improvement Plan. But our curriculum directors take the time to actually go through and set specific goals for their discipline or their program that is also based off of the District Improvement Plan. And so, I'm going to invite them to come up now and share their pieces. And we're going to begin with the STEM and the Humanities Department. So, I'll invite up Mr. Costa. I know that Dr. Porter, sorry, I'll invite up Dr. Costa. I know that Dr. Porter and Ms. Supas are both out with the flu. And so, Dr. Costa has graciously agreed to present on their behalf. So, give me one second, Dr. Costa, while I bring up the slideshow here and we can get started. I hope this is not going to switch screens. This isn't going to work right. I'm going to not be able to do what I think in presentation mode. Although, maybe if I stop sharing for one second. Let's try that.
All right, thank you. So, if you can go to the next slide. There you go. So, again, my name's Dr. Costa. I'm the STEM Director. And I am presenting for the STEM and Humanities Departments aligned with our District Improvement Plan. So, aligned with 1.1. Each summer, we've been having mentor training to train new mentors for our first-year educators. And one of our areas of emphasis these next few years will be to identify diverse educators to participate in our mentor training, to have more diverse educators take on leadership roles in support of our novice teachers. And then, our second action aligned with 2.1. Each month, we have professional learning and collaborative opportunities for our coaches and consulting teachers. And a big area of focus for our work with our coaches and consulting teachers is to provide professional learning in the area of anti-racism, restorative practices, and equity so our teacher leaders can then support our educators and colleagues in those areas. And also aligned with 2.1. This year, we're excited that we're able to have our grading subcommittee convening again in person after the last few years of having infrequent meetings remotely. So, we want to really support the more than 50 educators from across the district, spanning all schools and all departments, with professional learning and collaborative opportunities to inform our refinements and next steps related to grading. And then, aligned with 3.1, the Equity Advisory Board has identified a process to audit curriculums for areas of bias and to inform our next steps. This year, the Grade 10 ELA will be going through that process and we will be identifying courses to engage in that process next. Also related to 3.1, we will be engaging in learning walks with the administrative teams and with teacher leaders to understand ethical practices that are being used in our schools and our classrooms and to identify next steps to amplify effective practice and to identify areas for support through professional learning. And then, 3.2, we want to work to engage our coaches and consulting teachers in the area of effective caregiver communication in order to spread effective practice across the district and to make sure that our outreach to caregivers is culturally proficient. And then, aligned with 5.2, is working to have opportunities for students to provide feedback on different offerings. And this will inform elective offerings in the future or even just changes to existing courses. And then, 6.4, align our grading systems and language across the districts. So, this work aligns with our Grading Practices Subcommittee and also the Rethinking the Grading Grant at Revere High School. And then, aligned with 6.4 also, is provide professional learning in the area of deeper learning. And this is happening through our district-wide deeper learning team, through our work with our coaches and consulting teachers, and also through different offerings for director meeting PD. And then, I will pass it on to Kelly Williams, the Director of Fine Arts.
Good evening. Kelly Williams, for those of you who haven't met yet. I just have a few things to highlight that also aligns with our District Improvement Plan. Something we've been already deep in working is collaborating with the high school to expand course offerings in the performing and visual arts. I want to establish a group, Guardians of the Arts, with, which is parents and guardians, like basically a district-wide PTO, which would be K through 12, a group of parents at all levels that would support any arts events that are happening. You know, sell tickets or be present for fundraising, things like that, to support fine arts. Connect with the family liaisons. I've noticed there's some miscommunication or communications that are happening and things that are happening that I would like to also be part of or that the art teams, performing teams, could connect and be part of. So, I want to really try and build relationships with the family liaisons and each admin team at each building to increase the communication for families regarding fine arts events. And then, through all of that, I really want to, over the next few years, increase the opportunities to showcase the wonderful things that our students are doing through concerts, exhibits, and productions. So, with that being said, there's a few to highlight for this year. But one that I didn't put on the slide I wanted to mention was our elementary music teachers started last year with an idea to put together a youth singers group. And so, at all the elementary schools, they are having an after-school choir club and teaching the kids at each elementary school the same songs. And the goal is to come together in February for a rehearsal, where all the kids get to take a little bit of a field trip during the school day, if you're in the choir and join in with the other elementary schools to rehearse. And then, for this year, they, their goal is to do their own performances or to, you know, go out in the community and perform together. But for this year, since it's the first year, they're going to be highlighted at our district art show in May. I forgot to add that to the slide. The City Lab held their first community art exhibit, which was a huge success. Hill will be having the production of Matilda. Our May will be having Alice in Wonderland. Garfield is having Clue this year. The SBA is doing a show, a variety show of decades. And then, the one that we're most excited about or really excited about is that in over 30 years, we'll have the first musical at Revere High School. It's been a huge talk. We had over 59 students, I believe, auditioned to be in it. And it's really, really exciting.
Great.
I'm not sure who that for me.
Jen Labalida and Chelsea Anna talk about EL programming. Multilingual world language, sorry.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Labalida. I'm the Director of the Multilingual Department, which represents world language in ESL. And I'm here with my colleague.
I'm Chelsea Banks. I'm the Assistant Director for our department.
So, as you might remember, the last two years, we had our DESI audit of our programming. And I'm very pleased that we only had two findings out of 12 different areas. And then, we also, of course, had our Equity Audit, which people expressed their needs in the field, especially of multilingual education. So, all of these different initiatives and things that we'll chat about tonight are directly coming from that. So, one of our findings was in the area of curriculum, that we did not have an ESL curriculum.
So, to address this finding, which again, came both from the TFM and also shows up in the Equity Audit, we've pulled together teams of teachers, ESL teachers, that are working with a consultant to come up with a professional development process and also to start creating curriculum units. So, we have an elementary team, a middle school team, and a high school team. So, they're in the process of going through their first unit creation cycle now. And then, in the spring, they'll become facilitators of additional teacher teams to create more units to this end. And then, coupled with that, we're also implementing some new district-wide assessments for speaking and writing that will be implemented across schools and across the district so that we can calibrate and get a good measure on student progress. And then, another area of focus for us is trying to expand offerings, both within the world language. Half of our department, thinking about expanding to additional languages and how to open up those courses for more students. And then, also thinking about opportunities for electives and more advanced programming for students, multilingual learners that are, you know, across both parts of our department.
And so, the next several bullets discuss professional development and staffing. Our language development coaches, which are new positions, thank you, are providing world language professional development. Also, we have two ESL teacher professional developments based on our WITA standards. So, it's the first time in a while that the ESL team has gotten their own PD during our director meeting time, as well as some SCI professional development that all educators were able to select. We also are working on an ESL internship process where educators could add an ESL license to their licensure field. So, more to come on that in the spring. Also, Project Create with UMass Boston, it's several years out, but they received a federal grant and invited us to participate with them, where we wanted to push our cohort to be a couple of years from now so we can encourage folks that don't have that bachelor's degree, that are multilingual, to get that degree first. So, then, we'll be able to provide free master's courses that can lead to ESL licensure, to bilingual endorsement. This aligns well with looking to diversify our staff, both culturally and linguistically. And then, another program that we're taking advantage is Bridge USA. This year, we have our first two visiting teachers joining us in a cultural exchange from Spain. So, we have two phenomenal educators teaching Spanish, ESL, and science here at the high school. And so, that's another way that we hope to expand our teaching force and have this wonderful partnership across the world.
We heard a little bit earlier about the ALPAC. And so, this is an And so this is a continued area of focus for our department. We have new ALPAC leadership that was elected in the spring of last year. And so we're excited to collaborate with them to create a vision of what programming and support can look like for our multilingual families. And then in parallel with that, we have a new language assessment coordinator who's stationed at the PIC and does assessment testing for students as they come in. And so we're excited to expand what that role can look like for welcoming families as that's, you know, the first stopping point for new families as they join our community.
And we are looking forward to coming back in a couple of months and sharing more about what we are working on for our department. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Diana Finn is going to talk to us about school counseling.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Diana Finn. I'm the Director of Counseling for Revere High School. So I'm excited to be here to talk about our early college designation proposal and our four bullets are highlights of that top bullet that's there. Early College opens up access and opportunities to all RHS students. Students will have the opportunity to take up to 30 credits with our partner at Northshore Community College, starting in their sophomore year of second semester. Components of the program include equitable access for all students. Our proposal will open this up to our current freshman class as they enter their sophomore year and second semester. Students will be taking two college courses per semester. Sophomore year, they'll take a very general Intro to Higher Education and Comp 101, which are transferable. And then entering their junior and senior year, they'll pick a pathway which closely aligns to our new high school pathways. Those include business administration, entrepreneurship, environmental studies, and education. We also added one for students who weren't quite sure what they wanted to do, a liberal arts transferable credit pathway for students that want to go on to the mass state schools or community colleges. Part of our proposal is also for it to enhance student support through Northshore's supports as well as Revere High School supports. Part of that includes an ELO, External Learning Opportunities Liaison from Revere High School, as well as content support teachers at Revere High School to help students throughout their coursework at Northshore. An exciting part of the proposal is also a connection to career. As students enter their senior year, they'll be taking courses within their career concentration and engaging in an internship within that pathway as well. So really trying to create the pathways, starting sophomore year through senior year. There's always the opportunity for on-ramping and off-ramping throughout the program for students that, whether it's a, they want to start later, or it's not a great fit for them. Secondly, MYCAP, which is My Career and Academic Plan. It's a true college and career readiness curriculum from grades six through 12. And while it's part of the early college designation process, it's an important part for all grades six through 12 students to build their college and career skills. Our guidance counselors, middle and high school, are in the midst of professional development and devising what this curriculum will look like. And while individual school counseling at Revere High School will stay one-to-one, of course, the idea is behind MYCAP is that college and career readiness is a building-wide initiative, that it should be woven throughout all of the content areas. And then just lastly, the career development opportunities and the internships through early college. We feel like targeting career-specific internships that align with their college coursework is a natural decision to make, but it will be on top of our, we currently have 150 students who are engaged in internships as juniors and seniors at Revere High School. So we're proud that that number is back to where it was pre-COVID and growing. And then just overall pathways, I spoke about it through early college programming, credits beyond the school day with early college coursework potentially for students, internships over the summer, and looking at flexible graduation requirements to show competencies in multiple ways. An overall goal in this work is that early college is to give access and opportunities to Revere High School students with targeted career concentrations. Thank you for having me. I'm not sure who's next. Jamie, sorry.
Jamie Flynn is going to talk about data and accountability.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Flynn, Executive Director of Data and Accountability, and I'm excited to be joining you this evening to highlight a few areas from the Data and Accountability District Improvement Plan. In support of Strategic Initiative 1.1, Dr. Garcia, Allison Schenk, Sarah Chavez, Mo Coyle, Linda Barber, and I, representing Revere in the Department of Education's Teacher Diversification Professional Learning Community. Our team meets monthly with over 50 districts across the state to focus on the development and refinement of talent diversification strategies with the goal of ensuring more equitable outcomes for students. As a team, we've begun to explore resources such as promising recruitment, selection, and retention strategies for a diverse Massachusetts Teacher Workforce Guidebook, as well as other resources that are shared. Our team was just invited this week to present in January for the group as a whole. Also, in support of Initiative 1.1, I've worked collaboratively with Dr. Garcia and our two affinity group facilitators to ensure that our affinity groups are supported and that we collect relevant feedback necessary to continue to reflect and refine our supports in this area for staff. Moving to Strategic Initiative 2.1, in collaboration with Dr. Garcia, Mona Ford Walker, school principals, and school equity teams, we've worked to reflect and refine this year's school equity plans and ensure that they are available to all. I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to the translators at the Parent Information Center, as well as Anne Baltrunis, Ian Paul Lamato, for ensuring that these finalized documents are translated and are available on our website. In regards to Strategic Initiative 3.1, I support the Data and Accountability Working Group of the Racial Equity Board and continue to monitor achievement with an equity lens. The Data and Accountability Working Group is currently wrapping up their analysis and beginning to lay the groundwork for where they would like to move forward, next steps for their graduation survey that they conducted at the end of last school year. The team added additional questions to the survey with a lens on equity, and they've been delving into the data collected from over 190 surveys, particularly focusing on how groups respond, different groups responded to the individual questions. The teams looked at the responses and they broke them down by representative groups, and they're hoping to refine next year's survey as well. They looked at areas such as English language learners, immigrant students, students on IEPs, former English language learners, race, ethnicity, languages spoken at home, just to name a few of the ways that they've really delved into this data. In support of the Strategic Initiative 3.2, I'm very excited to continue looking at ways to ensure that our caregivers have access to their students' academic progress, but are also able to use the parent portal in more meaningful ways. And this year, we've rolled out to caregivers, having the opportunity to be able to update their contact information online through the parent portal. These new form features are available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic, and we're looking to continue to add additional features as we increase usage and access to parent portal. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Pass this off to Joanna Rizzo.
And Joanna Rizzo is going to come up and talk to us about early childhood.
Good evening, everyone. So in early childhood, we're going to look at three point two. The first one is parent caregiver classroom engagement. Those of you that are familiar with the Early Childhood Program, one of the mainstays of our program is pack time, parent engagement, parent and child together time. Typically, we've used a very standard model. Parents or caregivers come in, we listen to a story, and we do a craft. What my team of teachers and I have thought over the last couple of years with the families is that that's a really passive activity. Oh, it's frozen. That's okay. I'll just keep going. It's fine. So one of the things that we have decided to do is redefine what pack time looks like for our caregivers. And in thinking about some of the information that came out of our Equity Audit in 2021 was how can we use the information to engage our families? So we are spending some time this year during PLG to redesign what pack time can look like, how we can engage our families, get feedback from the caregivers. It's not just parents, it's not just guardians, it's neighbors, it's aunts, it's uncles. What can they contribute? What ideas can we bring in from their cultures, from their traditions, to really enrich that pack time together? So that's what, one of the things that our team of early childhood teachers is doing. The other piece is that when we think about streamlining communication, enhancing that relationship with families, we've transitioned to using dojo for everything that we do with families. Paper newsletters are no longer being used. It's a quick, easy way to communicate with families. We're able to send pictures, documents, parents can communicate in real time, and that's something that the families appreciate, the teachers appreciate. So that's just a little change that we made. And so that's for three point two. Moving to five point one, collaborating with college and career readiness to design early childhood internships for students at RHS. Being a product of Revere Public Schools, I really appreciate the connection to community and fostering the relationships with students. And I know Diana said we're back up to capacity for 150 internships here in Revere High School. But what I want to do is really focus on the early childhood program, and Kathleen and I are going to speak to focusing on the special ed teachers in the district and bringing those students from Revere High School into those classrooms, meeting our students, meeting our teachers, and really fostering those relationships and the interest in teaching in those areas. So that's what we're going to be doing. I was thrilled when Dr. Kelly mentioned the Future Teacher Club with AmeriCorps and Lynn, so we're going to look into that as well. I made notes about that. And then the last piece, which is really a big undertaking that we've been working on for the last year. Last year, we endeavored to identify a new curriculum for the early childhood program, something that has not been done in, I believe, about 10 years, with a focus on anti-racism, social-emotional learning, equity, parent engagement, and a strong homeschool connection. My teachers and I spent last year vetting about a dozen early childhood curriculums. We narrowed it down this year to three. We have three of those three companies coming in and doing in-person presentations, and we're going to be selecting them, the curriculum this year. And again, leaning into the Equity Audit findings last year around curriculums that provide culturally responsive resources, trainings for staff, they prioritize SEL. Those are the things that are going to be guiding us as we narrow down which curriculum we think is going to be the best fit for our early childhood program, for our community, for our families. So that's.
Thank you.
That's our early childhood. Thank you. And now it's Kathleen.
And Kathleen Slazak will now join Joanna to talk about special education in general.
All right. So for our special education, just change the slide. All right, two point two. Again, talking back to our edit priority area from our Equity Audit, monitoring support structures and creating equitable access for special populations. We are in the midst of redesigning our pre-referral process, also known to many of you as the BBST, to ensure equitable practices across the district and that we're meeting the needs of all students. One of the priorities that came out of our audit was to maintain support structures to increase access and successful outcomes for high-need students. And so what we are looking to do is to ensure that we are using consistent protocols across the district as far as implementing accommodations and strategies to meet the needs of students and to also ensure, and this is something that we talk about a lot in the special ed side of things. One thing that we're proud of in this district is that we don't over-identify students of color. That's something that in my tenure in this role, we've consistently maintained that we don't over-identify students. And so we want to continue to ensure that that is a strength for this community, for this school district. And so the BBST is an area that we need to revisit, we need to refine our practices. It's not consistent across the district, and so we have a working group that's led by Mona Ford Walker this year. She's leading the work on that with us. And so I think that's going to be a really great, a great piece of work for this district. And then, sorry, three point four, increased caregiver participation in CPAC. CPAC has been something, and Stacy knows this, we've struggled with caregiver participation in CPAC. We now have a new leader for our CPAC organization, and so we will continue to look to increase our parent participation. We're going to work with our ETLs to find creative ways to engage parents through the team meeting process, encourage them to join our organization, to be a voice for their
And then looking at five point one, collaborating with college and career readiness to design special education internships for students at Revere High School. Right now, we already have great relationships with Northeastern, Emerson, and BU for our related service providers. So we get lots of providers from there that come and work with our related service providers. We also have great school psychologist interns currently, and so that's really great. What we want to improve upon are those opportunities for people to come in to work with our special educators, our small learning groups, our life skills populations, and also take a look at our current students and ways for them to have internships with those populations. So we see a lot of internships in our general education classrooms, but we're not seeing it in our special education classrooms. So when we're looking at people coming back after graduating from Revere High School and going to college, we're not seeing those candidates for those positions. So that's something that we're looking at expanding so that we can get Revere graduates back in to work with our special education students. And then also peer mentors at the high school to expand the student participation in a wider variety of electives. So looking at our small learning group and life skill students and expanding those elective opportunities for them and pairing them with a mentor that's a high school student that can attend that class with them and kind of model and be with them in those classes so that we have more opportunities in those electives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jill Herwig, who's going to talk to us about health and wellness.
Hi again. Nice to see everyone this evening. So just to talk about a little bit of what we're doing over in the new director role in the Health and Wellness Department. Over the last year, we were engaged in kind of like a mental health audit for the district where there was a lot of information coming from that. And one of the biggest focuses on that was student access to comprehensive health and parameters, whether it's the availability of it, the knowledge of it, how to access it and whatnot. So that's really kind of the guiding focus this year, along with a few other areas of equitable and diversification in our programming, so that our students are reflected in our department and their needs. So one thing that I'm working with Director Frank Shea on is we have a partnership with Maybird, which is our state organization when it comes to physical health and education in that realm, and a huge partnership with Salem State, Springfield College, Bridgewater State, where some of the best physical education and health programming comes from. And they are in a deep dive into diversifying the students that are coming out of those programming. So we're trying to work and have a communication and keep communication open with them, as well as I meet with them on a monthly basis, to try to diversify and bring students from the local area, especially from Salem, into our schools and teach in our schools. We do have a lot of our Salem State crew in the Physical Education Department, but looking to maybe strengthen it a little bit more. I know Esteban Ortiz was our most recent add-on from Salem State and is a Revere resident as well. So we're working on that, as well as working on developing directors' meetings for our professionals in the health fields and our support staff that helps them service our students and provides for what they need, especially pre-COVID. Our counseling staff has just finished the DESI Safe Schools programming, learning about how to support our LGBTQ and trans students in the district and how it looks like on the parent side as well, supporting families, services, access to services outside of the school day. We're also engaging in conversations in the health ed classroom in regards to skills based on. We're also engaging in conversations in the health ed classroom in regards to skills-based health ed, where in last night's webinar, it was also mentioned that developing skills of students is really essential versus just knowing facts about things. And it's something that if we want to increase and improve the health and well-being of our students in our community, developing skills such as decision-making and advocacy needs to be really not only embedded in the health ed classroom, but through maybe other types of SEL development and advisory programs. So the health educators themselves are participating in a training of developing that type of curriculum. I've also been in conversations with Chris Bowen regarding what SEL could look like throughout the school day in other academic settings, whether it's an ELA classroom or math classroom. So we're working on developing that so that it's not just in the health ed classroom, but students are learning and developing these skills everywhere. And then lastly, probably the biggest focus coming from that audit was access and communication to our caregivers and our students regarding all things health. So whether it's the nursing services, nursing and health protocols in the district, whether it's access to counseling. So I've been working with Paul Amato and Anne Bertrunis on revamping our current website in that area and developing a health services area that outlines nursing and resources there, as well as our identifying our counseling staff in every building and how students and teachers and the adults and caregivers at home can access them. So it's really ultimately like the whole focus of our Health and Wellness Department is really just teaching students and their families how to gain comprehensive access to health and healthcare, whether it's mental health services, physical health services, or how to develop their own self-efficacy in that area. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jill. And next up, Frank Shea is going to talk to us about physical education and athletics.
Good evening, everyone. Some of our strategic initiatives in PE and athletics going forward this year, one-one is exactly what Jill talked about, is our collaboration. And you can see her clipart shining through on my slide. We have wonderful collaboration. But we continue to expand our, trying to expand our candidate pool in both health, physical education, and athletics with that collaboration. Area two-one, provide professional learning experiences for coaches with a focus on equity and inclusion. I've recently attended the Addressing Hate in Sports Leadership Series sponsored by DESI, the MIA, and the Attorney General's Office. And yes, that's correct. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So this is an ongoing series of leadership sessions that we will continue to try to rotate coaches, as well as myself, to get better in this environment. Also in two-one, we've developed directed meetings this year that support educators in creating an inclusive learning environment in the phys ed classroom. We are trying to build and expand on our curriculum at all three grade bands to include professional practices in untraditional sports and activities such as boxing. We're trying to take advantage of Officer Singer's Boxing Club, as well as use some of our expertise within the department to expand to other grade levels such as CrossFit, pickleball, and golf. And the last initiative is three point one, which we are extremely excited about. As you know, we started our unified, our Unified Sports last year with our first track meet. We've recently completed our Unified Basketball season, having four contests and a jamboree. And we look to include bocce in late January and expand on our outdoor track and also some weight and weight training with our Unified students. Thank you.
That's it?
That's all we're doing. That's it.
Any members have any questions or comments? Mrs. Rizzo?
I am just so amazed and so excited. I look at some of you that have always done the work and have always made us Revere proud. And then I look at some of the ones that came in as very young people in the teaching profession, and to see how you have blossomed and you have made this district so much better with the additions that you've given. I just, I'm really excited. I'm excited for our district for the next few years, and then I'll evaluate later.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Any other members? Ms. Thai?
Well, I've just been thinking throughout, what an exciting time to be a student at Revere High School. I am amazed at how many opportunities there are. I mean, Joanna and the others who, whom I taught here. You know, we had books if we were, you know, and we, sometimes we didn't even have books, but anyway. So, and I'm embraced by my two students around me here, too. It is, it's such an exciting time to be here. Just think of the opportunities that these kids have. I always think of the new sports. I'm for pickleball. You know, just everything. Wow. Thank you so much. Thank you for the leadership of Dr. Kelly, the mayor, everybody, Assistant Superintendent, everyone who comes here. It just must be wonderful to be coming through here. Not that they don't have their problems, every kid has a problem, but not that they don't, but wow. The structure is there to help them get over that and to, to do everything they can. So I admire you, I appreciate you, I thank you for all that you have done, and I encourage you to keep going. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thai. Thank you, everyone. Great job.
So can I make a motion to accept the district improvement plans of these wonderful departments?
Motion to be made by Mrs. Rizzo, seconded by Ms. Feranti. Rule call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravalese?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor, you go.
Yes.
Dr. Kelly? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the superintendent's report is an update on the Lincoln windows. As the committee knows, in 2021, we were accepted to the MSBA's accelerated repair project, or program, sorry, to replace the windows and doors at the Lincoln School. And we have encountered some supply chain issues with that project. Even though it's only December, our designers and developers already know that the glass and the aluminum that we need to order for that project will not be here in time for summer. And so because this is a little bit of a complicated project, now normally we would just bounce with that, and we would say, well, we'll start it in the fall, and we'll move two classrooms at a time and do those classrooms, and then move on to the next two, and try to continue through the process. But the challenge with this particular job is that some of the window encasings contain asbestos. And so there is a real mitigation process involved in this window replacement project. And therefore, we've decided that it's in the best interest to try to delay by one year, and so that the project will go out to bid in February, March-ish. But the plan will be to do the project not this upcoming summer, as we had originally hoped, but a year from then, in the summer of 2024. And so we've submitted a request to MSBA to have that program delayed by one year. And we don't anticipate it'll be a problem, but I just wanted to let the committee know and let the community know that that's, that's what our challenges are, and that's why we're seeking to delay this project. In terms of a new high school update, which is the next item on the superintendent's agenda, I think that most people know by now that on December 12th, the city council voted to move the approval of schematic design to a Ways and Means Subcommittee meeting, which we won't, which we knew wasn't going to happen until after the new year. And that, of course, meant that we would be missing the December 28th MSBA submission deadline. And so we've accepted that reality, and we are going to continue to do our work and move forward with the support of the mayor's office and everybody else to continue working toward this project. And so our next steps, together with the mayor's office, is clarifying the funding for the project, and then going back to the city council with some more specific information, while our partners at Leftfield and Perkins Eastman and Kinsigley are going to try to see what we can do to keep the, the project going. The biggest challenge that we face right now is that we won't have a, a funding agreement with MSBA until the design is approved by them. And so since what we were hoping to submit at the end of this month won't get submitted till the end of April, and that means we likely won't have a funding agreement until around June. So it pushes the timeline out, and the question is, do we just let that timeline lapse, in which case we would be finished with the project a year later, which would have some impact on the budgeting and the finances? Or do we try to push through, in which case we would have to try to come up with some money as a city in order to continue that work without the funding agreement? So the city kind of forefronting some funding so that our partners at Perkins Eastman and Leftfield and Kinsigley can continue their work between now and April when we don't yet have an SD approval. And we met with the mayor's office on Monday about this. We're going to meet with them again on January 9th, and we should have a lot more information by then on where we stand and what exactly the next steps are, and which of those two scenarios are going to be best for the city and best for the students. So we're working on it. Definitely, it felt like a, a little bit of a setback, but as I said to the building committee in our meeting last Thursday, this is a hurdle that we didn't anticipate, but we will overcome it. We are a resilient group. Our kids are resilient, our city is resilient, and no matter what, this will end up being a fantastic school, something that we can all be proud of, something our students will thank us for, and something the city council can be proud of as well. So onward. Let's see, what else? The two items that we had talked about, oh, sorry, actually, one more thing that's actually on the agenda, is we had our community meeting on opioids and fentanyl last night, and I understand that some people were confused about the purpose of that meeting. The letter that we sent home talking about the steps we were going to take in response to the powdery substance that was found in the high school two weeks ago included three primary steps for now. The first was to work with our colleagues in law enforcement to bring dogs in to do a sweep of the school and see what they found. We conducted that sweep last week, and we're very thankful to the Revere Police, the Chelsea Police, the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office, the Essex County Sheriff's Office, and the State Police, all of whom sent canine units with trained dogs. They took the, we took the advantage of their resources to, to sweep the school both for drugs and for weapons. And thankfully, there were no hits at all on any kind of weapons. Those dogs are trained to identify bullets, gunpowder, firearms, anything like that, nothing at all in the school, which is tremendous. They are also trained to identify various different kinds of drugs. Importantly, I want to mention that one of them is not fentanyl, because if, when you train the dogs, they learn how to identify a scent. And if they were to train on fentanyl, they would die. So they're not trained for fentanyl, but they're trained for marijuana, cocaine, heroin, Molly, all kinds of different drugs, both synthetic and non-synthetic opioids and other kind of drugs. I mention this because this is all new information to me that I just learned in this process. We did, as I identified in the letter that we sent out to parents and students after that, have five what we call hits, which means the dogs identified something. And that was one backpack in four lockers. We searched all of those items and didn't find anything in existence in those spaces. But what that tells us is that there may have been something in those spaces in the recent past. And so Mr. Bowen and his team are working with those students who are responsible for those lockers and that backpack and their families, just to say, this is what we found, and if we need to intervene in some way, let's do that. If we need help, let's provide that. You know, how can we make sure that this is, that the, that the student is being safe? I also, at last night's meeting, gave an update on where we were in terms of the powdery substance that was found a couple of weeks ago. And as Mr. Bowen indicated in his initial letter, I believe his exact words were, "A packet of an unknown substance, powdery substance, was found, and our SRO did an initial test, and it showed it might contain fentanyl." Now, we know that the media and other people turned that into a bag of fentanyl, which is never what we said it was and never what we thought it was. But I do think that the incident was very helpful to us because it made us focus in this area. And so we brought the dogs in last week, as I mentioned. We also engaged some of the experts in the field to come and speak to the Revere community on Zoom last night. And I can tell you that we had about 70 participants live during the meeting on Zoom. And I checked this afternoon, a little bit before this meeting, so these numbers might be a little bit outdated, but there have been 87 views on Revere TV who recorded it, and there have also been 55 reviews on the School Committee YouTube channel where we also posted it. So over 200 people or families have already benefited from that information that was shared by the tremendous doctors who shared so much of their information with us yesterday. And the third major piece that we're doing in response to what was found in the high school is that we are working on an education program for students and staff to take place in the new year. And we have a meeting on Thursday with Mr. Bowen and Ms. Herwig, who you heard from tonight, who oversees health and wellness, and also friends from the SUDY office here in Revere are going to join us as well. And together, we're going to work on the curriculum that we want to share after the new year. And one of the things that we've learned is having giant information meetings with five, six, 700 kids in an auditorium doesn't work. What happens in situations like that when we call an assembly is that the kids you want to be there skip school, they cut out because there's going to be an assembly, and they know there's no attendance taken there. And the kids that you don't need to be there are there, and of them, about 15% pay attention to what's being said. So the strategy that we're going to use for this educational program is that we're going to train, working on this with the folks that I just mentioned, who are experts in this area, we're going to develop a curriculum, and we're going to train all of our counselors, our SROs, and our administrators in how to instruct that curriculum. But we're also going to train a group of juniors and seniors in high school who will train alongside the adults that I just mentioned. And once the training is complete, they will pair up in teams where there's one student and one adult who together go and deliver this information to small groups of students and teachers, about 15 people in a room. And in that way, we think that it'll be a lot more engaging, people will have better opportunities to ask questions. We feel like having a student alongside an adult will encourage kids to ask the questions that they're unsure about, seeing one of their peers present. And we're going to provide this education not only at the high school where the incident occurred, but also at city lab and at all of our middle schools. We know that we have to engage these kids very young before they start experimenting in this kind of education. So that's what we have coming forward after the new year. Sorry. In addition to the health classes that we already have at all of our middle schools and high schools, and you know, you all know that we engage in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey every year when we get that data back, the health teachers use that to inform their practices. We've engaged with other professionals like Chris Heron, who has come in and spoken to our students at the middle schools and the high school. That's something that we haven't done since before COVID, so it's something that we need to reintroduce now that we have really a whole new group of students in the middle schools and the high schools. So that's another step that we'll be looking at as we proceed into the winter and spring of the coming school year. And one thing I did want to mention also is we are having the PowerPoint that was shown at last night's meeting translated right now. It's going to take a little bit of time because there was a lot to it, but we will post that as soon as we can. And a, a new feature that we've been working with in our Zoom meetings, we weren't able to get it on for last night's meeting, but we should by the next time we meet, is that they have live translation of closed captioning. And so we have the purchase order already made, it's just. It just hasn't gone through the process yet, so we didn't have it for last night, but that's coming up soon. And the other good news on that is that's also available on YouTube. So if anybody goes to the school committee's YouTube channel or the Revere TV YouTube channel and goes to watch this video, if you hit the CC button for closed captioning, you can turn on closed captioning. And then if you right-click it, language is an option, automatic translation is an option. If you click on that, then you can select what language you want to see the closed captioning in. So that should be helpful to our families whose preferred language is something other than English. And one of the things that I know that we need to work on is communicating how to do that in these other languages so that parents know how to do it. And that's something that we'll be working with. I've actually reached out to WEE, who does a lot of work around this kind of community engagement with parents who speak languages other than English, and hopefully I'll be connecting with them tomorrow. We can figure out how to get that information out. I think that's everything on opioids. Two other quick pieces to update the community on that I mentioned at the COW meeting. One was the cameras, who we had, we had been experiencing supply chain issues in our effort to get new cameras in all of the buildings, but we have overcome some of those issues, as I mentioned. And so there have been eight new cameras installed in the interior of each school building already, and a number of exterior cameras have been installed, three at the high school, four at Beachmont/City Lab, and three at the Garfield complex. We have another delivery that we expect around February, which will add another five to seven exterior cameras at each school, especially for the Wayland SBA, the RMA, and the Paul Revere. So we've made some progress on that. And then finally, and I promise I'll stop talking after this, I just want to alert parents that we are sending home COVID tests with students. Each student will receive two tests. Unlike in the past where they used to get one box that had two tests in it, our students are going to receive two boxes that each have one test in them. And so parents should check backpacks at the end of the day on Thursday. All schools will be sending them home on Thursday. If a student is absent Thursday, they can pick them up Friday morning, Friday's a half day, of course. And what we're asking people to do is save one of those tests for students to take just before they return to school on January 3rd. The other test, if somebody in their family isn't quite feeling well, and they want to share that test with them before they have a gathering for Christmas or Hanukkah or Kwanzaa, feel free to share that other test, but we just ask that you save one and administer it to your child before they come back to school on January 3rd. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any members have any questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on to report of subcommittees.
No, I'll sit.
Mrs. Rizzo? Go ahead.
No, I just want, I know Asma Fadu started a Facebook page for the, I can't even say the word, Arabic community, to give them information on how to get information from the schools and stuff, so maybe that's something she can also post as far as using YouTube and the CC. She's, she's just an amazing woman. And by the way, we got the email today saying she was the employee of the month.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
And I'm so happy for her. She's very deserving.
Asma is a, is a special woman, and we're very lucky to have her on staff.
Yep. I think the work that she does and, and what she thinks that the city is enormous, and as enormous as her heart and her smile, and we're just lucky to have her.
Yep, indeed. Okay, we'll move on to the report of subcommittees. Ms. Gravellisi? Oh, nope. Nope, sorry. Motions. Motions. Ms. Gravellisi, now it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor Orego. Okay, the first motion we have here on the agenda is a motion to encumber $60,045 for invoices 8797000020 for Perkins Eastman Architect DPC for October 22 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Okay, next motion is to approve payment in the amount of $60,045 for invoice number 8797000020 for Perkins Eastman Architect DPC for October 2022 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Okay, motion to encumber $62,221.50 for invoice number 879700021 for Perkins Eastman Architect DPC for November 2022 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve payment of the amount of $62,221.50 for invoice number 8797000021 for Perkins Eastman Architect DPC for November 2022 Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Motion to encumber $23,084 for invoice number one for Consigly Construction Co., Inc., for October 2022 Construction Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment in the amount of $23,084 for invoice number one for Consigly Construction Co., Inc., for October 2022 Construction Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Motion to encumber $23,084 for invoice number one for Consigly Construction Co., Inc., for November 2022 Construction Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment in the amount of $23,084 for invoice number one for Consigly Construction Co., Inc., for November 2022 Construction Services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
All right. That's it. Thank you, Ms. Gravellisi. We'll move on to, to old business. Any members have any old business? None? New business?
We have paraprofessionals. Diane's here, so she can fill us in.
Thanks. So the committee will recall that in recent months, when we talked about ways that we could spend some of the money that we had and carry forward that wasn't spent from the last fiscal year, one of the suggestions was that we introduce some full-time paraprofessional positions. And so we were able to meet with the paraprofessionals, and I want to thank members Feranti and Bronson Rizzo, who joined us for that meeting and negotiated a way to introduce these full-time positions. And so with their support, I know that I'll let them speak for themselves, but I believe they're recommending that this MOA be approved by the committee, and with your approval, then we can go ahead and advertise for those positions, which I know will make Dr. Galucci very happy.
Mr. Feranti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we did was we actually approved it through the Ways and Means for 16 positions. They originally had 10 full-timers, but two resigned or retired, and then we added those to them, so we're actually approving 18 going forward. And I guess that Mr. Galucci will start the process after the first of the year, and we're going to go from there. And actually, we did it all in one day. It worked out great in one day. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the MOA with the Revere Paraprofessional Association.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Milbury Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Thai?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to new business. Mr. Kingston?
Last, last night at the city council meeting, Councilor Steve Morabito.
I'm finding it to be out of order because we had nothing listed for new business.
It came up last night and couldn't be put on the agenda.
No?
Well, all right, I'll ask to be put it on the following month. Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay. Any other committee interests that anyone would like to raise? Okay. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the school committee will now adjourn. Thank you.